I'll call this meeting of the Hawkeye County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
He's muted.
You're muted.
Okay.
Tom's muted.
Tralka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here. Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Take a motion on the agenda as received or amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please, Mr. -- I mean, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The agenda is approved. Next, we will move on to public comments. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to the board at this time? Something that has nodded from the item.
Nobody here.
No one in the room? Anybody online today? All right. Hearing none. We will move on to claims and payments.
Morning. This week's claims payments, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Large portions of secondary roads, eighty-one thousand, two seventy-one thirty-six. Conservation, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three ninety-two. Mostly from the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. Everything else looks normal.
All right. Do we have any questions for James today? Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. I will now move on to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. All right. One in the room?
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas. And just a brief update, the roads are in good condition. Our PCI, our Cedar Robsey River Ridge Replacement Contractor, they will probably not be getting much work done in the river this week. The river is on the rise again. Will probably be up and down over the next -- for the remainder of the week. I also wanted to let you know that I did follow up with the individual at the end of University Avenue who wishes to vacate the portion of University Avenue. He has talked to a surveyor, a consultant, and they will begin work on preparing the legal description. And then, we will proceed after we receive that information from a surveyor. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. We lost video transmission. Right now, I hope everyone can hear and see me. Are the people that are joining us remotely, can you hear me?
Really not.
Are these mics open? I guess you could...
Did it just shut off?
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
Does this happen?
No, no, no. That's the... Is it audio and video, or just...? Just a second. I'm getting back on. I don't know why it's...
Probably too warm.
Too much humidity. Well, they won't be able to see him, but they can hear him from a regular mic, can't they?
There you go.
Okay, we're back. Can the people joining us remotely, can you hear me?
I've got a ten o'clock conference call with Genesis Doctor.
Okay.
If we're not done by ten, I'm just gonna log off.
Hope everything's okay. I see Grant is at the podium.
Can you hear me, Chris?
I can't see any video yet.
He's on ours, yeah.
I just wondered if we're gonna have to get off, get back on.
Okay, we did get off, and we're back on. Okay, so you can hear us?
With department units.
Okay. Sorry for the interruption. Grant Veder, County Auditor. The primary election, as you know, is next Tuesday. And then, the following Tuesday, June ninth, will be the canvas by the Board of Supervisors. And one thing that we haven't discussed is how we're going to hold the canvas where the Board needs to review the results of the election. And since some of you haven't been in the office for a while, we didn't know how you wanted to do that. We need kind of a hands-on approach to this. And so, I didn't know if the Board members, if any of the Board members who typically attend remotely plan to come in, or if we should try to make arrangements for doing it. Otherwise, we should have, obviously, some Board members here. But as we have done in the past, we would have people available to be ex officio Board of Canvas or members. So, just wanted to bring that up to you and see what your thoughts were on that.
Yeah, I'll be there.
I plan on doing. Actually, I plan on today.
All right. Well, if you're all gonna be here, then we will proceed as we normally do. If anything changes about that, please let us know, and we'll make arrangements.
Very good.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
County Conservation. An update over the weekend, things went well. We were operating at less than capacity with our camp sites and everything. All rest facilities were not open. Just to let everyone know, it looks like sites across the state are planning to go open a hundred percent of their camp sites by the weekend. And that will include opening up restroom. We intend to do the same. There was an announcement about wedding venues, which, you know, catch us with the Rotary Reserve and Lakeview lot. The rules are very unclear for us. We're hoping that tomorrow, Governor makes sure each tomorrow will have clearer direction as to where the Rotary Reserve and the Lakeview lot fit into this wedding venue situation. We are already getting calls about short notice and people wanting to reserve those places. So, we would like to update if we can, but we just really don't know what the rules are. So hopefully tomorrow will give us a little clearer indication. Those venues, so you know, campgrounds will be operating at a...
Thank you.
Just in time.
Mike, could you repeat what the last couple of comments were that you said, please?
Yeah, just wanted to let everyone know that we will be operating our campgrounds at a hundred percent by the weekend. Our shower and restroom facilities will be open.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other department heads, officials today? All right. We will move on. The motion approved, May nineteenth meeting.
So moved.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's removed and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, and then they're approved. We do have two hearings today. We will get to those later on. Next is the consent agenda.
So moved.
Resolution.
Second.
All right, it's removed and seconded. Any thinking or wishes to discuss? Hearing none. Please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. Next is under contract agreements. This is a resolution that the law is responsible for. We screen from Louisa Construction, Inc., corporate, Flandreau, South Dakota, year one on roadway stabilization project, L dash six, on Ainsborough Avenue, Hammond Avenue, Hawkeye County, at the bid of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. Be reported, and for the chair to sign the contract. On the check of insurance, I recommend that county engineer.
Can you hear me? I'll try to be brief here. So, this is the second portion of that roadway stabilization project that we would like to do this summer on Ainsborough Avenue and Hammond Avenue. We put together a small plan set and sent out bids to Monats Construction, J.B. Holland, and then Louisa Construction. So, three well-known firms who do this type of stabilization work. We received back three bids from all three of them. I should say that we did budget for this total project, one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in our FY twenty-one budget. This specific portion of the project, we had budgeted approximately sixty thousand dollars. The low bid was from Louisa Construction, from Flandreau, South Dakota, at the twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. We've been, I've been in contact with those people for over, for about six months now. And they, I would recommend that you accept their bid. They seem very knowledgeable in this type of work, and I'm very interested in having them receive the bid. Think that it would be a good contractor to do the work. Can I answer any questions?
All right. Any questions from the Board?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Oh.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Moving on to other... This is a resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Roy Given, Lady Superintendent, be approved, and direct the chair to sign for the same, the purchase two thousand face mask, one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars from SNL.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I believe this is at the same rate as it would have been for the higher volume. Do we have any other questions or discussions?
Rory's walking to the podium.
Good morning, Boards. I think it's Chris's. Just wanted to mention, based on our meeting last week, we originally looked at twenty thousand mask. We did reach out to the vendor. They're willing to honor that, that cost of sixty-four cents per mask at a quantity of no less than two thousand. As of right now, there's about a two-day lead time. You know, that could always change, but again, as of this time, there is about a two-day lead time. So, my recommendation would be to order the two thousand masks today. Keep an eye on our inventory and order as needed.
Thank you, Ray. We do have a motion and resolution. Do we have any other questions or discussion?
Thanks.
Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Tralka? Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Next is a motion as the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kim Veder, Information Technology Director. The approved inject correct period assigned for the same, purchase six desktops in years for six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and four cents from CDW.
So moved.
Yeah. This is part of our rotation plan. Unfortunately, with COVID-19, some of the computer equipment prices have gone up, so...
Like what percent, do you know? Five, ten percent, something like that?
Given so one of those replacements for HR that I talked to you about?
HR has the laptop already, so that's already been done.
Thank you.
I would say five to ten percent. Any other questions?
Not much we can do about that.
No. And laptops, Dell laptops, they say four to eight weeks out. So, we ended up getting, I usually get Dell equipment. But the Lenovo that we bought for HR, we could get that sooner, so...
Pick your motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is approved. Next is a request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kathy Nicholas, county engineer, be approved, and direct chair to sign for the same, purchase of tandem axle trucking amount of one hundred and forty dollars, one hundred, one hundred and sixty dollars, using some components. The total truck purchase back from insurance company was fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars. Settlement payment was seventy-six thousand dollars. We apply short purchase price.
So, I believe I sent an email to all of you concerning the circumstances of this truck. It was driven by one of our employees, and they did, excuse me, the truck was totaled. And the truck was a 2017 model with ninety-two thousand miles on it. So, it did have some components on it that were in very good condition. It was mostly the front end that received the damage. We would like to buy back the truck from the insurance company, the truck that was totaled, for the fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars. And that reduces our insurance settlement to the seventy-six thousand dollars. Then, we received a bid from Don's Truck Sales out of Fairbank, Iowa, for one hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred, thirty dollars. It's going to cost approximately twenty-six thousand dollars to move the old components from the total truck onto a new, the new chassis that we would order from Don's Truck Sales. This seemed like a wise thing to do, considering that there's many components on the 2017 truck that were in good condition. So, we're asking that we be allowed to buy a new chassis, buy back the old dump truck, and then proceed with this plan. This, of course, was unbudgeted because it was not anticipated that we would have this truck damage. We would, I would pay for this out of our capital FY twenty items, where we have a deficit, or, excuse me, we have an extra one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars from our FY twenty capital items right now. So, that would pay for the, the extra needed to purchase this new truck chassis, minus the insurance settlement. Can I answer any questions?
So, what's, what are we actually paying for this truck? Hundred and forty thousand?
Yeah, we would be paying approx...
And then, you take the seventy-six that off that we were getting from the insurance?
Right.
And then, you put back fifteen thousand that...
Yeah, we would pay, be paying approximately sixty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
Sixty-two thousand, five hundred?
Yeah, sixty-three.
Our insurance was around seventy-seven thousand?
Seventy-six, six hundred.
And you mentioned in your email, too, about the urgent need of timing to get this...
Yeah, and so, I think, you know, these trucks at Freightliner, they don't build the chassis until you've ordered them. We can't. Because we need, we need a special truck for, so that the plow can attach to the truck. So, we have to, they begin the construction, the build process, once we order it. It generally takes many months for them to build a truck. Typically, it takes about six or seven months. A lot of that has to do with the time spent to put on the snow equipment.
So, what's the twenty-six thousand you mentioned?
So, the twenty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, that would be to pay for the labor to take the, the new, excuse me, the old dump box, put it onto the new chassis.
So, I thought, if we're ta, if we're taking the truck, how's that gonna cost us twenty-six thousand? Or are we just taking parts of it?
So, currently, we have...
Who's taking it apart? They're taking it apart for us?
Right. Currently, the total truck is up in our watershed. We would haul that up to Don's truck in Fairbank, and they would take off the old, the components off the 2017 truck and put it on the new chassis.
So, where's that twenty-six thousand? So, that's added on to it, too, then, right?
Right. That's included in the one hundred and forty, one hundred and thirty dollars.
That doesn't come out to the right number. If you're, if you're getting seventy-six thousand back, and you're spending sixty-three, and you're getting fifteen, and then you're adding twenty-six, that's more than a hundred and forty thousand.
So, Don's quoted us a one hundred and thirteen, seven thirty for a new chassis. And then, we have to add the twenty-six thousand dollars for them to do the labor. So, that's, that's a hundred and forty thousand. Then, we're gonna subtract off the settlement of seventy-six thousand, six hundred, leaving us the balance of sixty-three thousand.
You know, it is what it is. Got to replace the truck, obviously. At least we got some money back on insurance, which is gonna help out here. Kathy, I do like to ask you, this is the third major accident since I've been here with a snowplow. Do we do training for the vehicles?
Yes, absolutely. In this, you know, this was in April, so it wasn't related to a plowing accident, per se. We, all, the wing plow and the front plow had been removed. Of course, it's the same dump truck, but yes, we do, do defensive driving, safety trainings. Those types of things, we're, we're doing those frequently.
So, when they bid on the job, even though they've never had that classification before they receive training, before you put them in the driver's seat?
Yes, generally, before we're moving in, this would be an Equipment Operator Two position, who's driving the tandem dump trucks. We would be looking to see that they have proficiency at driving a tandem dump truck.
What? Have any further questions? Do we have a resolute, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All please, Mr. Veder.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next is a resolution to amend to the list of financial institutions to be depository county funds, performance with all applicable provisions of twelve B and twelve C of the Code of Law.
So moved.
Amounts not to exceed maximum deposit approved for each recipient of the financial...
So moved.
Rita Schmidt, Treasurer. There's no changes on this dispository report. This is an annual report that I do. And we removed Country View from what was deleted last year. So, that's the only changes, was removing the line item for Country View, but no other changes.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Oh, I think we did. Yeah, we had both.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Next is a resolution to designate submitted financial institutions as twenty-depository of Hawkeye County Funds, performance with all applicable provisions of twelve B and twelve C of the I code, amounts not to exceed. Is that...
So moved.
The move... Is there a...
Second.
All right, it's removed. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next, with a hearing in mid-open, in nine twenty-six AM. You have a motion received and placed on file, publication, and notice here.
So moved.
You have a second? Second. All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is a move, close the public hearing. Your oral and written comments received. Any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
All right, any other comments?
How many bids, Rory?
We had received five bids. All of you should have been emailed a bid form, or a bid document to notate the bids.
All right. Do we have any oral comments before we close the hearing?
No.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed. All right, next is the bids received, open, read, and placed under five.
Okay, the first bid received from Hawkeye Solar. They're out of Dubuque, Iowa. We did receive a bid bond.
Is this...
Hawkeye Solar. Project price, one million, three hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. One, three, zero, four, seven, one, two. Second bid received from Eagle Point Solar, and we did receive a bid bond. Total bid from Eagle Point Solar is nine hundred, fifty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Nine, five, zero, eight, three, two.
You hadn't mentioned the budgeted amount earlier, if you want to do that before you're done, what we'd projected.
Want me to do that now?
One million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Third one, Moxie Solar. Out of North Liberty, Iowa. We did receive a bid bond. Bid price, nine hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Nine, one, three, seven, seven, six. Fourth one is from Lifetime Solar, Kansas City, Missouri. We did receive a bid bond. One million, one hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. One, one, seven, two, six, four, zero. Last one is from Price Electric, out of Robbins, Iowa. We did receive a bid bond. One million, one hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and four cents. One, one, eight, three, five, one, two, point, zero, four.
Thank you. That's good, so we've got four bids under budget, so that's good news. We have a motion to-
Thank you.
Just on file for review?
All move.
Second. Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion or questions?
Linda Leyland did ask what we originally estimated this project at, and it was at one million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Further discussion or questions? And I believe that we will take a week or two to review these?
We actually have set up a meeting with the committee, the Energy Efficiency Committee, and we plan to have this back on the agenda for next week for our recommendation.
Very good.
Thanks, Rory.
Thank you.
All of us in favor, two, five, I say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion carries. It is now nine thirty-four AM. This is a hearing on the close fiscal year twenty.
So moved.
Second.
This is a motion to receive and place a copy of proof of publication, and a book. Any further discussion or question? All of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Next is a motion to close the hearing, as oral comment raised. Any written comments, Mr. Peter?
No, sir.
All right. Go ahead, James.
All right, thank you. I wanted to, and I believe that is the screen that everybody's seeing with the revenues. Right now, what we are looking at, we're looking at a budget amendment, intergovernmental revenues. Elections, twenty-two thousand, two dollars. That increase is just from the special elections. The miscellaneous revenue increases, conservation trust, seventy-three thousand. If you remember, we actually transitioned this trust into the account that we're going to be using for fundraising fundraisers. So the revenues and the expenses are going to be increasing from that trust specifically. Conservation refund, fifty thousand increase, excuse me, in revenues, that is solely because it is more than anticipated. The operation, or the operating transfers in, this is gonna be the transfers in into the capital fund from the general fund. This is solely based on the solar project. So I have 1.2 million dollars in there as of right now. If you want to, if you want to potentially do a portion of this 1.2 million, rather than the full, we can do that, we can lower it. I just didn't want to have to increase it later on. So we can, we can do that transfer at any point, but the 1.2 is the full budget amount for the solar project. So that will be something that we can kind of discuss, that's something that we want to increase. Moving on to expenditures, Public Safety Jail Commensary Fund, that is an increase of 200,000. That is because there is a jail intake renovation, as well as the community expenses. County Environment and Education, Conservation Trust again, increasing expenditures for the Friends of Hertford. And then there were employees that decided to take health insurance that were on the budget. That is a 128,000 dollar increase. Government Services to Residents, Elections, 48,000 increase. There's a 40,000 dollar increase to postage. And then an 8,000 dollar increase, which is a transfer from the Otters Office. There was, so you'll see that the, the transfer, or the, excuse me, the salaries from the Otters Office are gonna go down 8,000, so that's gonna be a complete wash there. Administration, Maintenance Department, 29,800 dollar increase for furniture expenses for Pinecrest. That was budgeted FY19, so that's gonna be just rolled over into FY20. Again, right here, the Otters Office, that is an 8,000 dollar decrease in their salary, which is transferred to the elections. Board General Supervision, this is a decrease of 87,000 in the unemployment insurance. This is gonna be offsetting the increased expenses in the general fund a lot, so. Moving on to debt service, this is a decrease of expenditures by 74,000. Excuse me, it says 74,000, but it's 75,335 to capital expenditures for the solid waste in E911. Moving on to capital expenses, so this is gonna be, again, the solar project, a 1.2 million increase for capital expenditures. We don't anticipate using this 1.2, but I put it on there again, just because we can't increase it. I don't know if we're gonna have an estimate of what is going to be spent in FY20, but that is the price. Hundred and twenty-eight thousand increase for the jail boiler, that was the overage, as well as the VA renovation into the capital funds. Eighty thousand dollar increase for the Tyler Technology, that's coming out of the IT fund. And then a hundred, 100,000, 958 increase to fund proceeds expenses for E911, as well as finishing the lighting project. And then if we keep moving down, there is, that is fully published. So I will have everything that I just went over, starting with the revenues. I can entertain any questions, comments, anything like that, you so choose.
James, on the solar?
Yeah.
I think it's pretty obvious there won't be any in FY20. Why wouldn't we just like do a budget amendment in FY1?
So, there might be, it depends. I mean, I need to speak with Rory, depending on what can be expensed in 20. That's just, again, I put it on there because that is the full budget amount. If you approve the solar project, and, you know, a few hundred thousand is expensed in 20, just for research, anything like that, just from a company that's approved, that's why it's in there. So, I would recommend, I mean, you're not gonna get anywhere near 1.2. So I would maybe recommend transfer, moving that to, you know, maybe 500,000, something that you know that you would expense, and then we can finish the, finish the rest, once we have a, once we have a number more concrete.
Rory, do you have any idea of the expenses that would come in 20, or could possibly be in 20 yet? Rory, if any?
I don't have my capital list with me, but I'll try to.
Wing it, okay.
Well, we still have, we still have a few projects remaining for FY20, as far as capital projects go. One of them is our door replacement project in the main level of the courthouse. Another project would be our, our digital screen.
This is just for solar?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's the solar that we're doing the amendment for.
Would you have any idea what could potentially be expensed in FY20, any, any sort of preliminary research, any labor that would be put in?
No, I wouldn't know that today. It's scheduled to be completed in September, the end of September. You know, we would, we would ask them to invoice us as they, as they move forward. You and I had talked about whether or not they can actually get the panels and invoice us right away, but I would just be guessing today.
Exactly. So, I guess with that being said, I mean, whatever they, whatever they feel that they need to invoice us up to June 30, you know, we just, we just don't know that. We don't know what kind of labor that they would put in, in the meantime, so I would suggest mending something. But no, I don't feel like you're gonna reach that.
Do you have any idea on the panels? Like, if they were to order anything? Okay.
No.
So, James, if we go ahead and do the 1.2 million, what are the pros and cons, I guess, of doing that and not doing anything? You know, if we don't have any expenses?
We don't do, if we don't do anything, then we would need to, we would need to communicate to the company that is awarding this solar project, if it is, that they would need to start in FY20.
I'm sorry, that they would need to what?
They would need to start in FY21. So they wouldn't be able to bill us at all in FY21.
More group next Tuesday, you're only left a little over three weeks of work of June before you get into your new fiscal year.
Yeah.
I live-
By the time you get contracts, it's gonna be mid-June.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like, yeah.
So, I mean, it's unrealistic to think that we're gonna have much invoicing before the end of this year.
And that they couldn't wait till July, anyway. I mean, they couldn't wait till July.
That's when the invoicing would be, but when would the actual work take place? Because it has to be paid out of the year that the work takes-
Just a minute, I think you're not able to hear some of the conversation.
We're only talking, four weeks left in this fiscal year, so, I mean, by the time we get contracts, it could be mid-June. There's not gonna be, there's not gonna be much physical work.
You probably, yeah, need to go to the podium.
But if there's anything that's billed to, for work that's done in June, that would have to be paid out of FY20.
Yeah.
Right. Depending on how long it takes for us to turn around contracts for this project, let's say we're looking at sometime the first week of June. Yeah, which, that might be a bit aggressive on a project this size. As Grant had mentioned, even if we did get the panels ordered, they technically should be on site and invoiced, so to get that turned around before the end of this fiscal year, I think is pretty aggressive.
So when you had the pre-bid meeting, was there any discussion of that, I mean, of any part of it starting this year?
No, all we talked about was the completion date.
And that was again?
September 30th.
30th, September 30th. And the approximate time it takes for a project?
Where you have a contract.
Ninety days.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's my point. We're already midway into, potentially midway into June before all the contracts are in place, so to put an order in, and to get us invoiced, we would have approximately two weeks to try to get as much invoiced in this year. And I couldn't guess right now. Once we make our recommendation, if the project's approved, we can reach out to the vendor and try to have a better understanding of what that might be before the end of the fiscal year.
Well, James is just looking at the timing.
Frankly, it's really not gonna be a big deal if you, if you take it off. You know, like you said, there's really not gonna be a lot of expenses that are gonna be happening in this fiscal year. But at the end of the day, it's on there, you can always decrease if you need to, but I put it on there just to figure out what the timeframe was. I didn't, I didn't quite know what the timeframe was going to be, but I did this a few weeks ago, so.
So we could take it off, so what you're saying is we could take it off without any problems as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, you can always go down.
Sure.
So then, with that being said, if we, if we do take the solar project off the budget amendment, then we would actually, would decrease the capital expenses in the transfers, as well as the transfers in. We would just be adjusting those three items. But no, it's not a problem at all, that's why I wanted it put on there.
Yeah.
Chris, I would propose maybe leaving 250,000 of it in there, just in case there's some engineering work or other planning work that's, that could be done in those final, that final week and a half. We're not slowing them down.
Well, is there a problem, James, if they, I mean, if they do the work, if they could start work tomorrow, I mean, it won't next week or whatever, and they still bill us in July for work completed in June?
Yeah.
That's something.
Yes, because, I mean, as of right now, we don't have any solar project budgeted whatsoever. So I, I mean, frankly, I would agree with Chris, and I would agree that we would amend something. That way, whatever, whatever they want to invoice us, whatever they feel like they can, any labor, anything that's just gonna be a little bit unforeseen, we're gonna cover ourselves with a budget amendment for some sort moving forward in the, that way.
So you want to reduce that to like a 200,000 dollar transfer from general fund, as opposed to 1.2? Does that sound?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I would, I would feel comfortable with that, yeah.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Do we have further questions before we close the hearing? Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
All move.
Second.
It's moved in second, all of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is the resolution for the fiscal year 20 budget amendment amended by changing previous revenues and expenditures on file with county auditor.
So moved.
All move. Second.
It's moved in second, discussion or questions? Hearing done, roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Drelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution approved, thank you, James. Next is discussion, possible, discuss county fairness for COVID-19. So, I know one item that we discussed is whether we want to set a date for, for opening the courthouse to the public, and what parameters we want to put around that. So just open that up for discussion.
Well, Dan talked last week about kind of proposed June 1st, which would be a Monday, which sounds, makes a lot of sense to me. It also gives the staff time to kind of ramp up for that, as well as all of us get the notices out, I guess, to the public of what maybe we anticipate doing, the appointments and, and scheduling of the office, and people coming in with masks again, so. But I'm open for discussion on that as well.
You can put it out all you want. There's averaging over a hundred and some people a day coming in that still think we're open, so, you know, it doesn't matter when we open, it's gonna, it's gonna be a mess.
Do you want it sooner than June 1st?
There's nothing we can change to. People, people don't get the paper anymore. There's nothing we can change to, people, people don't get the paper anymore, they don't pay any attention to what's, what's out there apparently, because there's people coming in on a daily basis and think, ready to walk right on through until the guard stops them. Just like the masks, they'll stand outside and look at a sign and then come inside, and what do we, what do we do? Say, well, you asked for them, come in and get a mask.
Well, so it may, it sounds like you'll be confusing either way, but is there a date you'd rather?
Yeah, it's going to be a problem. Well, and they, and they got to get three guards down there, back to three guards by, before we open, because it, I've got, two guards cannot handle it down there with what's going on.
Does Rory have it?
Couldn't hear you.
Does Rory have the input that he wants provided?
Rory?
He's supposed to have one next week, ain't he?
Do you have any input?
Well, I won't, yeah.
Don't want to hear them.
Currently, right now, the third guard is placed over at Pinecrest, as everybody knows. I believe it would be the intent, once we open up to the public, to, to definitely have that third guard back here at the courthouse, because as Craig had indicated, that's, that's going to be definitely needed. So one of the questions would be then, do we backfill the guard over at the Pinecrest facility, which it was my understanding that guard was primarily there to kind of help explain to the public that the building is shut down and, and get them what documents they need. So if, if we are opening back up to the public, I guess the question is whether or not that guard is needed over at the Pinecrest facility.
Well, it's budgeted for the first of July, which is a month away. The only re, the only reason it's over there right now is because we closed the building. To open it up, I think for a month, we can get by until the first of July, we're here. Budgeted for a new person out there. But you got your people back to work now, so I think we're going to have to open eventually.
Yeah.
I would be supportive of backfilling that a month earlier, just to ensure I think that, since it's, it just seems changed for a month as per opening.
What did he say?
He, he would be supportive of backfilling it for a month, I think. Correct me if that's not what you said.
Yeah, yeah, backfilling position at Pinecrest, let me keep somebody there, but also defer to having the three at the courthouse.
It's not worth the money. It's a waste of money, you're wasting taxpayers' money.
Thank you, Craig.
I'm not really sure, what do you?
I think she's been averaging one or two people a day out there at best.
Just to give you kind of an idea of cost, approximately eight-hundred dollars a week is what that cost comes down to by having that guard over there at Pinecrest.
Shouldn't cost us nothing, that's our third guard. Oh, you mean if we put one over there?
Yeah, yeah.
So are you thinking that we need the three maybe for a while, or are you thinking three for ongoing?
We've always had three down here.
Well, but there was some times where I think they thought three was a little too many at times.
Well, it's, it's.
You got to first figure out when you got to open the courthouse.
Yeah.
Well, and you're going, like I said, they're going to be, one's going to be answering questions, one's going to be trying to take care of masks, and the other one's going to be checking, checking the computer, checking the stuff going through the, you know, that they're, if they're bringing anything in.
Well, does June first, sounds like we have some things to work through, I guess, too. Does June first sound like a, I can make a motion for that, or I'm certainly, like I said, open for discussion?
But what, what do you guys think, the departments, are you guys ready to go?
Right now, I'm ready.
You're ready to go, but, you know, are, are you going to go with appointment, is it going to be appointments only?
Rita Schmidt, Treasurers, we plan on going with appointment only. We will have possibly a person available for walk-ins, but we'll make appointments as we go along. So if June first is it, we're ready to start scheduling with the calls that come in.
Okay.
Good morning, Sandy Smith. Yes, we are ready to, and we are going to try to do appointments only, but I do think that's going to put a little bit of an extra burden on security. I don't know if people will come, I expect people are going to enter the building that do not have an appointment, and then that's going to be an issue. And so how do we handle that with security? Do they call us to come down? Do the people call us on their phone to schedule an appointment? There are things that we will have to work through, but we are ready to go as well.
This is Kathy again. Excuse me, we're ready as well, we get a lot less traffic than everybody else, we usually get people coming up that had been here to see Rita or Sandy, but we're going to have our door open, we're, we're going to get some flex glass, and we should be ready probably in a week.
Just remember, we can't put the workload on the three security guards, they have a contract in the agenda that what their job duties are right now, so.
Now, this is Grant. We would be ready to go July first, I'm sorry, June first. The one thing that I would note is that if the courthouse was open, we would then not be handling absentee ballots at the Fifth Street entrance, we would just expect people to come up to our offices normal. We wouldn't expect a huge crowd, but being the last day before the primary, I would expect that we'd have a moderate amount of people coming in to vote.
Chris, Friday, we got, we got a, you've probably heard, but there was a new supervisory order from the Supreme Court, it pushed all non-jury hearings to July thirteenth, all jury trials to September thirteenth, with the caveat that we can, we can conduct non-jury hearings, non-jury trials prior to that date so long as the courthouse meets the criteria, all the COVID criteria, which I know Blackhawk most likely will. In addition to that, I think to Sandy's point, some of the concern I have, we'll make do is a lot of the people that come see us, there's not really a mechanism to make an appointment, whether it be fine collection, or victims, or witnesses coming to talk to us, so that may cause some disruption at the front door, but we certainly could, could set up a, an appointment process if we needed to.
As far as I'm concerned, my job as a county supervisor is to decide whether to open up the department or the courthouse or not. As far as the individual office, if that's up to the elected officials, they're the ones going to have to answer to the public, not me, so.
But my point is if you open it, they're going to come, so.
That's true, that you're elected, so you determine how you want to handle your office.
And that's what I said I'd do.
In the same way with the reporter, the treasurer, and the auditor.
He's in favor. I think that's a yes, yeah.
He said it's one.
June first.
Little had company, her, she went by Little's house.
This is TJ, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm, yes.
Yep, this is Senator's office here, we, we are just in our board of view time right now, and really, we won't be making any appointments with anybody, they'll just be coming here if they want to sign up our like homestead credit or something, we don't have a lot of traffic this time usually, so, we're no big deal for us as far as we're concerned here. Yeah, I'd see people coming to the counter, for this, they're normal things they would come here for anyway. We're doing a lot of homestead and military credit and things like that on, over the email show, so, so we're at.
Thank you, TJ. All right, I know that a couple of, the reporters and VA have gotten us kind of press releases of our included, of how, without that being, of my request that it's opening date, that each department does send us something like that, that can be included, so everybody knows what the procedures are, parameters for different departments.
I'll make a motion, excuse me, I'll make a motion to open on June eighth separately, I'd like to discuss.
I didn't hear you.
Did you get that, Dan? Yeah, we couldn't hear that, Dan.
I'll make a motion to open June eighth separately, I'd like to discuss.
What was the last part?
We didn't hear the last part after June eighth.
Separately, I'd like to talk about backfilling the guard, but at this point, I, I'd like to proceed with a motion to open.
June eighth. A, a week later, June, not June first, on June eighth.
Correct.
And I, I would second that motion. I'd say the important thing for people to remember is that as, as things are opened up, it doesn't mean that there's less, there's actually more folks out there in the community with COVID nineteen than what we carry these restrictions, this is just, it's down, but I think the June eighth date is, is reasonable, and of course, if, if there were a big fight in that, or something, we, we evaluate.
So your thoughts on delaying it a week, I guess, I'm trying to understand that, if the, if everyone's saying that they're ready to do it, are you thinking that, and I know that's not everyone, just those that were here, but the delaying of a week, and some of that's because you're cutting out, I'm sure you're giving an explanation, they're just not able to hear that?
I just want to get, I want to get beyond the, and it just gets people who's involved another week.
Too many people got their microphones on.
That was my intention, but also, I support backfilling the guard, that may give us a week that we don't have, so there's a little cost there.
And I would say for my, the June eighth gives us a little bit more time in all the other happening, so that we can have that kind of, a little more than that two-week period separating, so we know all these other openings have caused urgent spike, and.
Well, I was going to throw this out when you said June eighth, I guess, would it make any sense to do something mid-week, to allow everybody to kind of have a couple of days to adjust, and then have a weekend, and then start a fresh week knowing the public's coming in, or not? No, I mean, it doesn't?
Well, he's got a motion on the floor.
For June eighth, okay.
Plus he changed his.
No, I, I just.
I want to take a vote.
All right, do we have any other further discussion of the motion on the floor?
The motion is exactly to open the courthouse the eighth of June, correct?
Correct.
All right, we're not, roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
White?
No.
Leyland?
No.
Little?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. All right, resolution is approved, next, we'd like to have a discussion on guards.
Chris, seeing that we're not going to open until the eighth, the guards are going to, whatever we decide with the guard, it's going to be a cost involved, and it's not on the agenda, so I would suggest putting that on next due date for discussion on court action.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Any, any other things to discuss today? All right, hearing none, we will move on to reports or information from.
Want to congratulate James on his new addition to his family.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Hazel. Yeah, little girl with Hazel. Yeah. Yeah, well, mom sleeps a little better as of right now, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, James.
Chris, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
I just wanted to recognize Julie, she's eighty, that's involved with Janitorial Service, courthouse, and on the few occasions I've been there in the evening, she rests with the jobs she does, the office works are, especially in these times where we need our areas sanitized and clean, I just wanted to give Julie some respect.
Thank you, and I'd like to just announce for the public that the early warming center, which we kind of depend on clothing at the end of March, we did do two months of extensions with Hocke X Music, but the final day of operation will be, I want to thank, we were able to keep it running, the number of these last two months by UConn's peer support, and these are folks who were formerly homeless and, we were able to, to run the center, a lot of that was worked from a, from a brand from Black Eye County Gaming, and it was very appreciative of the folks that love every day, past two months, to keep the facility running, I appreciate it, and community college for their partnership, Black Eye Gaming for their work.
I'd just like to send a thank you out to the city of Waterloo for taping the memorial service, virtual memorial service that was done this past weekend for Blackhawk County. It went really well, the crew that was there was excellent, they did a fantastic job, and getting a lot of comments about it. It was on MediaCom Channel fifteen about twelve times, so, and it's on again today all day, I think, on and off, so if you haven't seen it, it was really good. And also, a big thank you out to all the department heads and people that worked through this whole period, want to thank them for what they've done for Blackhawk County, coming in every day under difficult circumstances.
Definitely.
Absolutely, I think we all second that, Roger, white. Any other reports you have to make? Matt, I would, to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, moved and seconded, all is favorable, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone.
Thank you.